Board, I would like to officially call this meeting to order and if everyone would please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us to approval of the agenda.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I would like to call Dr. Bashawn Harris and we will move to influencers' recognitions and I will let everyone know that our May award for the student award will be moved to next month. We will have to, he was unable to be here this month, so we're going to bring two students next month. Dr. Harris.
Thank you very much. Good evening. We are pleased to recognize two outstanding employees who have been named UCPS influencers for May 2022. This program celebrates the passion, dedication, and hard work of UCPS employees. Each month, our staff members, students, families, and community members nominate a UCPS employee to recognize the positive influences they've had on the lives of students and peers. Tonight, I am honored to present Ms. Megan Plyler, a teacher at Waxahaw Elementary, and Mr. William Thompson, OT, a communication liaison at Cuthbertson Middle. I will now invite the nominators to the podium to read their submissions and recognize our honorees' accomplishments.
Good evening. I am a parent of a student in Mrs. Plyler's classroom. Mrs. Plyler, would you please come forward and join me? When I saw this opportunity to recognize an influencer, I was proud to share what an amazing influence Mrs. Megan Plyler has been to my children and thousands of others. She is a third grade teacher at Waxahaw Elementary, formerly a second grade teacher, and this is my third year having her as a teacher to my children. From the second they set foot in her classroom, Mrs. Plyler makes sure every child leaves knowing they are a special herd and that their teacher believes in them. My youngest child was in second grade with her when COVID prevented in-person instruction. She implemented engaging, hands-on lessons that made students feel like they were still in the classroom, giving a sense of normalcy during a very uneasy time. Because of her, my children have gained confidence as a learner and as individuals. She inspired them to be their best, celebrate each achievement, and encourage their friends. My family is grateful to have had Mrs. Plyler in our lives. I hope this recognition makes her realize just how incredible the teacher in person she is.
Good evening. I am Mike Murray, principal at Cuthbertson Middle School. I am pleased to present Mr. William OT Thompson with the award. OT, will you please come forward? William Thompson is an inspiration for our entire community. He is better known as OT and has worked at Cuthbertson Middle for four years as a community liaison. Looking for a way to give back to the community, OT joined our staff in a mentorship role for our students. OT loves our students and strives to assist them in not only growing as a student, but developing into the best possible version they can be. When OT is not mentoring students, he has been known to make lunch in the cafeteria, teach class, clean the cafeteria, sweep the hallway, and stay for basketball games in the evenings. OT is an unbelievable person whose main goal is to help in any way he possibly can. Cuthbertson Middle is fortunate to have him on staff. Thank you, OT.
I will now read the UCPS Influencers Proclamation from the Board of Education and Dr. Houlihan. Almost there, almost there. It's alright. Whereas the Union County Board of Education values the hard work of each employee within the district, whereas performance is an essential part of district operations, whereas Megan Plyler and William Thompson exemplify the performance dedication teamwork essential to the success of the district, now therefore, we, the Board of Education for Union County Public Schools and Dr. Andrew G. Houlihan, Superintendent, hereby proclaim Megan Plyler and William OT Thompson as UCPS influencers for the month of May 2022. Congratulations on this outstanding honor and thank you for all you do for our students.
OT, you can come back anytime. Amazing. At every regular meeting, the board allows up to 60 minutes that have been allotted for public comments. The board will not respond to public comments, however, a member may ask that the chair obtain clarification. Residents, parents, students, and employees of the district will receive priority on the list of speakers. If a speaker is not present when his or her name is called, the opportunity to speak will be considered waived. Only persons signed up may speak. Speakers may not give their time to another person or have someone else speak on their behalf. Individuals may address the board for a maximum of three minutes. The board will not hear in open session complaints about the performance of school personnel, personnel issues, confidential student issues. Should a speaker wish to seek information or share items that may not be shared during public comments, our staff are available to address your concerns or provide information. Dr. Jonathan Bowers, Executive Director of Academics, is here tonight. Thank you. Dr. Bashawn Harris, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, and Jared McCraw, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, are all here to assist. Our first speaker tonight is Stacy Swanson.
I can make the perfect bulletin board and I helped her grade her papers. I saw just how much both of my parents worked in the education profession. They used our own money to make sure that students at school had what they needed. When I became a teacher, I did the same. Education was the way of life. You can imagine surely how families of educators feel when all you see now are references that education and educators are grooming children for future abuse. Books that are recognized as masterworks are now somehow inappropriate. Subjects and programs that help kids navigate their emotions and that they aren't needed and that teachers and curriculum are somehow indoctrinating children. It is unbelievably offensive to me, my family, all families of educators, or anyone who has been positively impacted by a teacher. Teaching is one of the most essential and noble professions that exist. Since it is Teacher Appreciation Week, I wanted to talk about one teacher that made a huge impact on me, my father. I wanted to take a moment to read something that I wrote online last night. I kept myself busy today until I ran out of things to keep me busy. A year ago, in the early morning hours, my father left his earthly form and ascended into heaven. In a way, I was relieved that he was free from cancer. On the other hand, I was devastated at the thought of if there was only more time. Sometimes, the time we assumed we had is taken away. Kind of puts life and living in perspective. My dad was a rock star. He knew everything. And you could try and fact-check him and you'd be wrong every single time. Above all, he cared so dang much about people, especially children. He spent 40 years in education at all levels and he was so passionate about the kids that were the underdog. Those were the students he wanted to teach. He loved politics probably a little too much and I can see a lot of myself in that. When we moved to North Carolina, I didn't like what I saw. And just like my dad, I stepped up and leaned in and I think he would be proud of that. So thank you, Dad, for giving me that voice. I wanted to thank all of our hardworking teachers here in Union County Public Schools and if you are here and you also want this environment to change for the better, you have the power. Thank you.
Dan Oslander.
Good evening and happy Teacher Appreciation Week. I would like to address item eight on tonight's agenda, which is the approval of a contract with Atrium Health to provide additional mental health services to our high schools through a dedicated telehealth provider. In an ideal world, we would have enough school counselors on staff to fully support our children with in-person services at the 250-to-1 ratio recommended by the American School Counseling Association. School counselors have a unique capability to provide routine mental health services while also knowing our children, working with them regularly on social and emotional growth, and experiencing daily life in the building with our children. Because of this connection, they can readily identify when to refer students to a higher level of mental health care. That said, we recognize that staffing is a challenge in the current climate and that we need to be creative in how we can provide the best access to care and services for our students. We understand that the use of ester funding for any service requires it to be done on a contract basis as opposed to staff expansion, and that's a start. Given these constraints, I encourage this board to go ahead with the contract and begin the trial period as soon as possible. Providing additional access to mental health services in our highest-risked schools is a first step and the sooner we can go forward with the service at all secondary school sites, the better. Once we have this service started, we need to ensure the long-term viability for our students and do even more to support them. This contract has an end date and students in care as of that date will be terminated. What can we do to provide a broader range of services that meet our students where they are, help them to develop and move through life in a safe and a healthy way? We can and should transition from a contract program to providing additional onsite services by recruiting and retaining more school counselors. We will need creative solutions, incentives, and staff support to make UCPS a great place for counselors to work. While telehealth is a stopgap, more counselors onsite provides a level of comfort and care to our kids that someone on the other side of a video chat simply doesn't match. They can see our kids in the halls and watch interactions for red flags and trouble to come. They will lead initiatives. They will ensure that we are doing the best that we possibly can for all of our students. Students will be able to come together through group counseling, lunch bunches, guidance and learning sessions, and guided discussions to allow those with common interests and concerns to share experiences and to grow as complete human beings. 250-to-1 is not only a target, it should be our goal. The counselors are out there and for the sake of our children and the world of tomorrow, we need to find them. Thank you very much.
Erin Muldoon.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I always tell my children that timing in life is critical and how appropriate that we are in May and it's Mental Health Awareness Month. And one of the topics tonight is the teletherapy proposal for assistance with the crisis in our schools. This clearly is a nonpartisan issue. I take this very seriously for all children. For those that do not believe we have a crisis, you are either fortunate enough to live in a bubble that is clear of interaction with children who are under duress or you just choose to ignore what does not affect you. I had the privilege of being asked to participate in a parent-focused group comprised of parents from 11 different schools in Union County, all middle school and high school age. The conversation went immediately to mental health, bullying, and safety. I also sit on a site-based management team for Parkwood High School and the statistical numbers went up in behavioral issues for kids of all races post-COVID. This is a sign of a crisis happening in our schools. As a parent, if you have never had the terrifying situation of having to deal with a child in crisis, I don't think you know how very fortunate you are. And if that is truly the case, consider yourself blessed and you should probably abstain from voicing your opinion. UCPS has been a salvation for my kids on a number of occasions. There were days when my kids left for school and I knew they were distraught. I reached out to teachers, counselors, or therapists and they mobilized immediately. They literally changed the course of their day. It can sometimes be as simple as that. This is an example of an immediate need. We don't have enough therapists to serve the need of the county, that's a fact. I am 100% for parental rights and always have been. I was one, if not the first, parent to refuse testing, assignments, vision, hearing, etc. In a formal letter, I submitted each year for my kids' files. That is exercising your parental rights. I made choices for my children and didn't visit that on anyone else's children. Parental rights, an overused phrase that does not mean the same for everyone. Parental rights is making a choice for your kids and not forcing your beliefs on everyone else by taking their choice away. I am urging the board to please make the right decision tonight for all children of the county. We just lost two teachers in the last 30 days ripped out from under our kids. We had a bomb scare on Monday at Marvin High School. Just a few short years ago, a Cadda student committed suicide. Mental health needs to be serviced. If it saves one child, just one, this is a success. Not all families have the luxury of a two-parent household or the time to always be available. This is a serious need for our schools. Thank you.
Jody McConkey.
Hello, well, I'll go with the theme and happy Teacher Appreciation Week. And my name is Jody McConkey and I am a UCPS parent and a former UCPS teacher. And being Teacher Appreciation Week, teachers and staff need to know more now than ever that they are appreciated and supported. We have lost so many incredible educators this year and I personally fear that the wave of resignations is still ahead of us when school lets out in June. We cannot let that happen. They need to hear it from their students, their families, their administrators, their board. It doesn't have to be fancy, it doesn't have to cost any money. Even just a handwritten note is special to an educator and our educators are what makes UCPS special. But true appreciation goes beyond a specific week. If we truly appreciate our teachers, we need to compensate them at their true value and provide resources that enable them to do the best job possible. Things like locking in the old rate for after-school care so that teachers with their own children can continue working knowing that their kids are in a safe place until they're done. Something else we can do for our teachers is to approve the teletherapy proposal on tonight's agenda. Teachers love their students and they care about their health and well-being, but there's only so much a teacher can do to help a student in emotional distress. Having teletherapy, adequate counselors, psychologists, and other support staff that are best equipped to support them would be such a load off the teachers' minds. Plus, when students feel good, they typically perform better in school, both behaviorally and educationally, which in turn helps everyone. Let's make sure that we take care of our UCPS students' mental health, whoever may need it. Hopefully, next we can even explore how to help our wonderful teachers and staff with their emotional needs as well. In the meantime, thank you to all teachers and staff for everything you do for our children every day. You are seen, you are heard, you are appreciated, and you are loved. Thank you.
Kristin Smith.
Good evening. Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. As a parent of a child in the Exceptional Children Program, I would like to address an email that was sent from Board Chair Melissa Merrill to Representative Arp. In that email, it was stated that this board believes that the children of the more affluent clusters are obtaining fraudulent doctor's notes so they can take advantage of extended testing time. I was aghast at the suggestion on its face, but also dismayed that such an educated group of individuals wouldn't find the obvious answer as to why more children in affluent areas have IEPs and 504s. And that is resources. Affluent parents have the time and the money to obtain private testing for their children. They have the knowledge and networks to learn about their rights and pursue them. They have thousands of dollars it can take for these tests and the ability to spend days at these doctors and school appointments advocating for their children. Those are resources that less affluent areas lack. Or perhaps it speaks to a lack of understanding to the literal hoops that parents must jump through to get these accommodations for their children. If the board should take anything from these numbers, it is the lack of identifying at-needs children in less affluent areas and bringing those children's needs to the forefront when it comes to accommodations. The average number of children with EC needs in the United States is 14.4%. But Union County has less than 10%. That is not because we are special and have less children with needs here. It is because UCPS lacks the resources to properly evaluate and identify the children that most need those services. The wait to see professionals in UCPS can be months. This is something that should bring a shame, not a claim that wealthier clusters are cheating. I personally paid well over $1,000 and spent several days going through numerous tests of my child to get a proper diagnosis and a learning plan. After having initially been rebuffed by the school for interventions with these diagnoses, we now have a good working plan to help my child thrive. I would not have this assistance without the time, money, and resources dedicated to properly diagnosing my child. And it is unfair that my child should have this advantage over other needy kids in our county. As to the process of accommodations, there is no process under IDA or ADA that a student can get extra time on a test with a letter from a doctor. It takes up to 105 days with at least two meetings between parents and about five teachers and staff members along, with days of testing and observations to get an IEP. A 504 can be quicker, but those are usually based on medical needs that are new like a diabetes diagnosis or a broken leg that will heal and return to a non-504 status. Aside from the obvious disappointment that the Chair of UCPS Board of Education would reach such frankly offensive claims against our students and their parents, there is a need in UCPS that is not being addressed and that is of those children who need, deserve, and are entitled to accommodations to help them thrive as much as their peers in more affluent areas. Please look into this disparity and come up with a plan to help all of the children of this county succeed. Thank you.
Heather Oldland.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Since May is Mental Health Awareness Month, I would like to address the need for more mental health resources for our students. The past few years and even before the pandemic, mental health concerns of our youth have been in the headlines across the country. The current climate of our society has shown that there is a need for more mental health services for our children. There are students who are facing challenges every day that teachers or principals may not even know how to handle or parents may not even fully understand as we are living in different times. There are also stresses some students face that are beyond their control, like how will they get their next meal, to how will they deal with bullying, to how to speak up when they see injustices right before their eyes. The environment in schools should be a safe place for all students regardless of their race, ethnicity, religion, disability, sexual orientation, or gender identity. The moment they walk through those doors, every school or every student should feel like they are welcome and included. Unfortunately, not every student feels that they are welcome and included. Racial slurs, homophobia, and bullying because of difference in religions are just a few of the comments that I have heard from students and I know I haven't heard everything. These are similar observations that were explained in the Citizens Advisory Committee report last year. Those issues are still here and they will continue unless UCPS makes more concerted effort to acknowledge them and address them. The goal is for every child to have the access and resources for mental health across the board regardless if they are on the east side or the west side of Union County. I commend UCPS for moving in the right direction by taking steps to use the ESER2 funding to expand and supplement the existing help for mental health support for students. I hope that every student that walks through those school doors feel like they are heard and valued. Thank you.
Harold Schmacher.
Good evening. How are you doing? Excuse the eye, basketball poking the eye there. Champion professional mountain biker Kyle Warner was injured by the COVID vaccine. He can no longer do what he loves. He's in a vaccine injury support group and this is what he had to say. Out of the COVID-19 vaccine recovery group, six people committed suicide in the past month or so. This is a real thing. There's no one to talk to, there's no one to go to, and everything is censored. Those being injured by the vaccines are left behind, are being left behind by our government and by our healthcare providers. They are being gaslighted. This is probably the biggest issue facing our country that isn't being talked about. At the Finance Committee meeting, good questions were asked about the teletherapy RFP. One question I'd like to see asked is, does atrium therapy align with the values of Union County parents? When this board was fighting to open our school, fighting for optional masking, fighting to keep quarantined children in school, and fighting to end contact tracing and tracking, guess who was on the other side of every one of those issues? Atrium Health. It surprised me to see he was being recommended on the contract due to unsupportive this board atrium has been. The big healthcare companies grew their earnings during government restrictions while small companies were put out of business. Government policy was responsible for this, not an invisible virus. No virus drafted policy or regulations then decided it was time to reverse them. Had atrium supported this board and supported the common sense policies you were fighting for, there would have been significantly less stress on our kids. The kids could kill grandma marketing strategy to sell jabs. It's one of the most despicable I've ever seen and those responsible should be held accountable. Atrium could have made a difference for us when we needed them most, but they chose to put profits and COVID incentives in front of our children. I'd like to see UCPS make a priority to work with the Davids instead of the Goliaths. Instead of contracting with one Goliath company, break the contract up into five Davids covering 20 sessions a month or 10 Davids doing 10 sessions a month. I believe it'd be a win-win. The big healthcare companies got it wrong on everything the last couple of years. You had it right, they had it wrong. In 2020, when everything was shutting down, there were 117 reported Union County COVID deaths. In 2021, when everything was opening up because a so-called vaccine was available, COVID-reported deaths exploded to 287. They know the shots don't work and that they are injuring people and they are ignoring it. If a kid says they're afraid of COVID, how are they going to deal with the fact that they were a big part of the unnecessary stress and fear? Is the atrium teletherapist going to pressure them to get a jab? Or they admit that they were fear-mugging about selling jabs? I know there's a need for it, I hear these parents. There's an option for a three-month contract and give some of the parents maybe some time to find another alternative, look for some Davids. I just don't think rewarding the company that fought you guys on everything is the right thing for our kids.
Brittany Bolden.
Good evening. So I usually come up here and I have a speech and I read and for some reason when I read fast, like when I turn up the dial and speed, volume goes up too. So I'm aware that I probably sound like I'm yelling at y'all every single month and that's just not the case, or at least intentional. A year ago, May 2021, I came and spoke at the school board for the very first time. I'd never spoken at a school board before. I had never even seen a school board in person before. It was extremely overwhelming and I don't think I stopped shaking for like an hour afterwards. I can't believe it's been a year. It feels like several lifetimes. It's been quite a year, hasn't it? I'm tired. I can only imagine, who here is tired? Well, they all left, but I think everyone is tired. I am so thankful for everything that y'all did during the past year. I really don't think words can fully express that. You guys stood up against so many things and so many pressures and it just was remarkable. And I still, to this day, I get a chance to talk to people all over the state now and still to this day, people I talk to, seeing y'all's praises, they're like, thank God for Union County. Thank God for UCPS. I mean, and it happens all the time. So thank you for that. One thing I wanted to talk about was people tend to say that Moms for Liberty is against teachers. And I just wanted to set the record straight and say that actually, we're not. We love teachers, we really do. My both my parents were teachers, my husband's parents were teachers. There's teachers in Moms for Liberty all across the country. We love teachers. What we don't like is when activists come in and pose as teachers to implement a progressive agenda, typically coming from the NCAE or the teachers' unions. And I just, I find it interesting that they And I just, I find it interesting that they do, that they have so much influence, because really, they don't do a whole lot for the people they think they, or they say that they do. NCAE opposes nearly every school reform proposal like Merit Pay. The NCAE stonewalls proposals that empower parents. They use children as political pawns for the sake of union interest. NCAE alleges to speak for nearly 100,000 public school teachers in North Carolina. Since NCAE has only about 17,500 members, the membership is dropping dramatically too. It is an outrageous claim. NCAE says it represents the views of its members. Since 1990, the National Education Association, the parent organization of NCAE, has been the single largest political contributor in the education field. During that time, nine out of 10 contributions went to Democratic candidates, even though...
Thank you.
Sorry.
Oh, you're fine. I just got too chatty at the beginning.
Jessica Cook.
Good evening. Tonight, I come to you with three concerns. First, technology. Please get our kids, especially the little ones, off the Chromebooks. Children need to be putting pencil to paper. Pediatricians have been saying for years, limit screen time. Number two, textbooks. In the spirit of digital detox, please provide real paper-bound textbooks for our kids in six through 12. Providing textbooks across all school clusters will also provide consistency and equity in education. And third, the teletherapy program. First, let me be clear. I, like all parents, want to protect and help all children, especially those that are in abusive situations. We know our kids are struggling. That is why we, the parents, have lobbied you all year long to protect and help our kids. The concern is not about providing help, but rather the method of the therapy, the potential for excluding parents, the chosen provider, and the cost. For those of you that don't know, counseling is already readily available. We have 37 wonderful therapists in-house and a partnership with the Health Department. But giving children an iPad to talk to a stranger is a bad idea. Therapy should be face-to-face with a trusted, vetted therapist known by the school, the parent, and the child. While you claim that parents will be required to give consent for the teletherapy, you cannot be certain. State Statute 90-21.5 says minors of any age can give consent in North Carolina. That means that even if a parent gives consent for the initial session, children can give consent for anything subsequently that therapist suggests without parent consent. My biggest concern is the provider. I ask that you reconsider partnering with Atrium Health. They currently have a gender unit, and on their website, they boast about giving puberty blockers, gender-affirming hormones, referrals to surgeons, and legal support for changing their names. Please look at other providers. Finally, a $180,000 expenditure for 12 months of service is outrageous. It may be paid by Esther dollars this year, however, that expense will roll over to the regular budget next year. Currently, the new budget proposal is $12 million higher than last year. In conclusion, our children need a lot of help, both academically and mentally. Many of you say you are for parental rights. However, many, many parents have emailed you and asked you to pause and reevaluate this. If you vote yes to advance this, you are clearly ignoring many, many parent concerns. You are overstepping your bounds, and you are playing the role of parent. Thank you.
Colleen Kamolnik.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm here to voice my concerns over teletherapist on the agenda. Shocker. I do certainly appreciate the questions the committee members asked of staff around this item, but truly feel like this is an onion, and a larger conversation needs to be had. This is about parental rights. I have three main areas of concern. Concerns with teletherapy cost versus additional onsite school therapist, concerns with parental consent, and concerns with partnering with Atrium. Concerns with teletherapy cost. In the five high school listed in the RFP, there are over 35 counselors, social workers, therapists, and advisors to serve those 6,500 students. Why wouldn't we add additional onsite school therapists with the $154,000 year budget from the Atrium proposal? Concerns with parental consent. North Carolina Statute 90-21.5, minors consent sufficient for certain medical health services includes any minor may give effective consent to a physician licensed to practice medicine in North Carolina for medical health services for the prevention, diagnosis, and treatment of emotional disturbance, which is mental health treatment. So my question is, which takes precedence? The North Carolina state law requiring only minor consent, or the school system's policy for requiring parental consent? And finally, concerns with partnering with Atrium. Here's some language from their website. Atrium services and treatment options for gender-diverse children, adolescents, and young adults, including gender-affirming hormones, puberty blockers, readiness discussions, and referrals to surgeons is needed. Also from their website, why choose Levine Children's Center for Gender Health? Here's just a few highlights. Help with legal changes. My child doesn't have legal changes. I have legal changes. Helping your child navigate the legal parts of their care. Connection to specialists like pediatric gynecology. Let that sink in. Endocrinology. Mental health specialists to teach your child healthy ways to cope with the changes they'll face with their changing body and their life. Let's not forget about January Little John versus the School Board of Leon County. January Little John and her husband have filed a federal lawsuit against a Florida school district after officials at Deer Lake Middle School secretly transitioned her daughter into a transgender male, including allowing her to use male spaces like bathrooms and choosing pronouns. So again, why invite a vendor that publicly touts supporting gender dysphoria into our schools? I'm not asking you not to provide the needed mental health support for our children, but to reconsider the way in which we provide these services. Please table this, do more research, and find alternatives to provide the mental health support needed without teletherapy provided by Atrium. Thank you.
Laura Casey.
Thank you. Our teachers and administrators have valiantly withstood the storm of the pandemic, including the responses for mental health. During Teacher Appreciation Week, we would be remiss if we didn't thank them profusely for their resilience, their flexibility, and their expertise. In Union County, we've seen a mental health strain in a number of fights, the increase of costly vandalism over TikTok clout, the increase in disciplinary actions, and the strain on our educators to handle behavioral issues arising in their classrooms in unprecedented ways. It would be foolish not to explore using COVID funds to address issues coming out of the COVID pandemic. We'd be even more foolish to not pursue an opportunity with a premier medical group known for providing the best care nationally through programs such as Levine's Children's Center and their behavioral health programs. From the district's own accounting, Atrium would be able for a counselor to see 1,200 appointments throughout the year, and assuming any child was able to see them up to four times through that year, they would see an average of 600 students per counselor. With the less than $160,000 earmarked specifically for that 12 months, the annual cost would be $254 per student. That cost would be reduced if they were able to see more students during this time. Additional money is set aside for the training of teachers and for professional development, and considering that the average cost for professional development can be up to $1,000 per teacher, this comes an immense benefit and discount for the teachers desperate for support tools. This is a fiscally sound and beneficial choice for our students and our schools. While we are looking at supporting the educational and emotional needs of our students, there have been issues raised in the public sphere that seem in conflict with the goals. I am thankful that no matter how much we may disagree on issues, we have Ms. Heintal, who has worked with parents to pursue critical support tools. And it is a shame that our board chair has openly disparaged those same parents by accusing them of manipulating the system for personal gain. The attitude is wildly unsupportive of the mental health of our students and runs dangerously close to an environment of discrimination. And I'm concerned, based upon further details laid out in those same emails, that this attitude is trickled down to prevent support for students that desperately need it. How many students are being underserved? How do we fix that? Between these support gaps, as well as the clear achievement gaps between white students and our Black and Hispanic students, or between the affluent schools and the Title I schools in our district, we have some clear issues of students being left behind. And in a school district constantly promoted as the number one in proficiency last year, the idea that some very fortunate kids are holding up the district while we allow other students to be failed and underserved does not sit right with me. I encourage the board to do two critical things. The first, move to approve the ESSR proposal to partner with Atrium in providing telehealth students services to students. And secondly, I'm asking the board yet again to consider hiring an equity officer. It is clear we are underserving students, and I do not think that the board leadership can address it alone. Thank you.
Matt Smathers.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the school board, and happy Teacher Appreciation Week. I want to thank you for your time tonight. I am here in support of allowing students whose domicile is partially in Union County, but the street address is in another county, to attend Union County schools upon payment of tuition. Our property is split by the county line between Mecklenburg and Union Counties. Our property is also unique in that the county line runs through our house, precisely through the middle. Our bedrooms are all on the Union County side, so we sleep in Union County. Essentially, our lives are lived in Union County as well. We vote in Union County. Our children play sports for the Porter Ridge Athletic Association. Our doctors are in Union County. We grocery shop in Union County. And we also pay taxes to both Mecklenburg and Stallings Township. The policy change before you, Policy 4-19, which is item 10-C on your agenda, would add a measure of fairness to the present policy, and we hope that you will consider to support the change. Thank you for your time.
That concludes public comments tonight. And that brings us to the approval of minutes from open session April 5th and April 11th. So moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then next is consent. Motion to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next is Dr. Houlihan with the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, board members. As we have heard this evening, this week marks Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week. And on behalf of our senior leadership team, I want to say to all of our teachers and staff, thank you for all that you do for our children and our families each and every day. We know in UCSB, we have the absolute best teachers in the state of North Carolina, the best principals in the state of North Carolina, the best support staff. Team UCSB is strong, and you all are the reason why we are the best district in this state. So I'd like to ask our board and staff that are here to please give our teachers and staff a big round of applause this evening.
Yay!
With May also means that we are very close to the end of the school year, and for our graduating class of 2022, that means graduation is upon us. We want to say best of luck as we engage in the next three to four weeks of school. We look forward to seeing you at our graduation ceremonies. The first class of 2022 who will be graduating from Union County Early College will take place on May the 11th at 6:00 PM. So congratulations to all of our graduates and your families. I want to also say congratulations to Sun Valley Baseball, who has claimed the Southern Carolina Conference Championship. It is their first baseball conference title since 1996. We also want to say congratulations to Catta, Marvin Ridge, and Weddington for advancing and the tennis teams for making it to the playoffs. And finally, as we conclude the school year, very soon to come, best of luck on exams to all of our students, to those taking our EOGs and EOCs, do your best. And to all of our staff, again, thank you for your hard work this year and for a wonderful, successful school year. Board members, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Dr. Houlihan, I would be remiss in not adding to that the Rocket River Conference Championship won by the Parkwood baseball team, which I had the enjoyment of attending last Friday, so I want to make sure they get their plug too.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Thank you both. That brings us to the AgTech program proposal.
Board members, this evening, we are very pleased to bring before you what has been almost four years in the making, which is the expansion of our current AgTech academy. As you all are aware, three years ago, the board approved the beginning of an AgTech academy at East Union Middle School. We are proposing tonight and have proposed through Curriculum Committee that, beginning in the fall of next year, we expand to three additional sites, Union Elementary School, Wingate Elementary School, and Forest Hills High School. This will align very well to the work that we've done with Health Sciences Academy and the Monroe Cluster, where in our Forest Hills Cluster, we will give students on that eastern side of the county access to innovative programming that will align very strongly to workforce development and the needs of our county as a whole. I want to say a big thank you to our academic staff, who have done a great job working on planning, curriculum alignment, et cetera. We have several partners as well that I want to publicly thank that you're going to hear about tonight. Our leading partner in this effort is the North Carolina Cooperative Extension. Mr. Andrew Balkum is here this evening, who is also a Wingate Elementary parent, so I believe we have some personal investment here. And I also want to say a big thank you to South Piedmont Community College and Wingate University Leadership for your engagement with us, to our AgTech teachers at East Union Middle School, who have really helped to guide where this proposal is going. I want to say a thank you to them. And we also have our four principals this evening from Forest Hills, Union, Wingate, and East Union who are here if you have any site-specific questions. So I'm, at this point in time, going to turn it over to Ms. Casey Remmer, and she'll walk you through a brief proposal and then take questions.
All right. Thank you. So Dr. Houlihan just kind of shared with us, or shared with everyone, that we started this work two years ago at East Union. And what we've seen is a rise in interest in the program, and as a result, a rise in enrollment in our ag programs at the high school. So we're really excited about the momentum that East Union has kind of started in the Forest Hills Cluster, and we're very excited to expand. We just want to kind of take a second to talk about AgTech and what is AgTech. We have been using this term, agrotechnology, and it really is more than just agriculture and digging in the dirt and being farmers. There's so much technology and science around agriculture, and we've been trying to bring a little bit of awareness to what AgTech is. It includes things like robots and drones and science to increase efficiency and increase yield in products. So as we talk about AgTech, don't think about someone out in the, don't just think about someone out in the field. Think about all of the stuff that happens around agriculture and the work that's being done to help us in this area. So I'm not going to read all of these points to you on this slide, but I'm going to kind of just highlight that we are looking to produce highly skilled candidates for local high-paying jobs. That's really what our goal is. In Union County, we are an agricultural leader of North Carolina, and we were really working to align our work with the economic development that's happening in the eastern part of Union County. We know in education that high levels of engagement equal high levels of learning, that hands-on, relevant experiences are what are best for our kids. We know that developing high-order thinking, analytical skills, problem solve, and creativity is really what produces high-level employees. We want to laser-focus our partnerships for greater impact, and we want to build a pipeline for rapidly growing local industry. I'm going to talk a little bit about elementary curriculum, and then Mr. Davis is going to come and talk a little bit about middle and high. So in elementary, we're going to kind of start sharing some of that awareness and focusing specifically on plant and soil science, as well as animal science. We have a really unique opportunity as well to tie some of that work into nutrition. You may recognize that we talk about nutrition in our Health Science Academy in our elementary schools, and we're really looking forward to some collaboration between our Health Science Academies and our AgTech Academies, working together to see how nutrition, how it comes from agriculture, and it impacts health. We are working right now in both Union and Wingate with a program called OutTeach. An OutTeach is professional development for our teachers to get students to be learning outside. It's not necessarily learning about outside. It's just about how do you manage and teach students in an outdoor environment, which is really unique, and our students and our teachers are really loving it.
So it's good to see everybody this afternoon. And just to kind of continue on with what Ms. Remmer was speaking about with what we're looking at curriculum-wise, as students are gaining some of that exposure, and again, I have to throw out a shout to Mr. Balkum and Ms. Starks, who have been working with the teachers in the elementary schools to help with that. We've continued that into the middle school, and we have, in, in moving into those roles, we are kind of dividing our programs up a little bit, giving some extra exposure. It's what you see as the agriculture fundamentals, is where those students come in and they begin to learn a little bit about the general aspects of agriculture. Then students will have an opportunity to kind of choose pathways. And these pathways can diverge into animal and plant science and biotechnology with that STEM focus related to the robotics that we have at East Union. What those programs do is allow those students to begin to develop an idea of what their interests may be as they move into high school pathways. So we're really excited about that, and as Ms. Remmer said, we're really beginning to see the fruits of that, and we're seeing students continue to move into those programs at the high school. So as we move into the high school programs, the curriculum does, again, allow for multiple entry points for our students. We have pathways that include an animal science and pre-vet pathway, which will allow students the opportunity to participate in our vet-assisting academy if they choose to do so. We have a plant, a sustainable plant systems pathway. We have an agriculture mechanical skills, which also gives students an opportunity to get ASE certifications through our automotive program, as well as skills in our agriculture mechanics classes. We have a food systems program that will allow students exposure to agriculture, as well as through our culinary program. Students who complete that program would have an opportunity to attend that academy as well and get a full culinary experience. And the last, and again, these last two really align with what our, one of our partners with Wingate University is trying to do. We have an agriculture business pathway that allows students to learn about agriculture and be exposed to those pathways, as also as developing skills and learning about the business end of agriculture. So those are our pathways that we are looking at. So our key partnerships, again, the Cooperative Extension Service, they've been in, working with us diligently, and they're really working to help our teachers learn how to expand that. In our middle school, they're also already working with our science classes at East Union, and they're going to be expanding that, moving into the next phase. Wingate University, as I mentioned, is, has developed a agriculture business and a food systems majors and degrees that they will be able to implement next fall, and this will be a great way for our students to continue this. And South Piedmont is also looking at ways that they can expand on agriculture and those agriculture, technology careers and degrees that they maybe could have pathways in as well. So we're very excited about this opportunity, and we feel like this is going to be a really good opportunity for our students in that area.
Board, do you have any questions, comments? I think it sounds great. It's great. I'm glad we're doing this.
The principals took time to come tonight. Does any of the principals have any additional comments to bring to bear concerning what's been spoken of?
When I spoke with my staff about this last week, many comments were made about they believed that this would allow students to be more engaged in school, and they thought it would even increase our attendance rates because kids would be excited about coming to school and having that hands-on learning experience.
Thank you.
With the mechanical piece of that at the high school, with the ASE certification, a lot of agriculture equipment now comes with computers, GPS systems. Is it kind of tied in that also?
So the pathway that we're looking at, our students will come through our agriculture mechanics, agriculture mechanics two pathways, and those, they're learning a lot of hands-on skills related to things like, they're going to get some welding and all that, but part of that, they learn some basic CAD work, where they do some things with plasma, with a plasma cam and things like that. In the auto service, when those courses they'll take, they will complete the ASE certifications. There are some things related to that in there, as far as, those are, what we're looking at is entry-level tech skills. So many times, those skills are going to be worked on as they develop those and move through our program, maybe into our partnership with South Piedmont Community College and some of those as they move forward. But as they move through that, I definitely agree that there could be opportunities there for that.
I was very excited to have this presentation at the Curriculum Committee meeting. I, I feel like this program has the same potential that our Health Science Academy at Monroe Middle and Monroe High School has already exhibited. I particularly ask because of family history about equestrian sciences being involved, and I was assured that would be the case, as well as technical repair, the equipment repair. Because if you've ever seen the big tractors or combines going down the road, they do break, and so somebody has to fix them. And there are some very specialized skills required to do so, and that position is well in demand, and that fits in, complements the automotive sciences that are currently available at Forest Hills. So I am very excited for the Forest Hills Cluster to continue this program, and this did have the unanimous support of the Curriculum Committee meeting. With that, I'll make a motion that we proceed with this program, this program's implementation.
A second.
We don't need a second, right? Came out. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you all so much for being here tonight.
And Madam Chair, let me say it's good to see my full H family here tonight. I'm sure they're having a long time.
Thank you all very much for being here. We appreciate your partnership and your support, and we look forward to implementing in the fall. Thank you.
So I just want to plant one seed, no pun intended. So I get this question quite often, and, and hearing this presentation tonight before the motion was made, the only comment I would like to make is, it never occurred to me when I saw this on the agenda, that this would be so well-connected to auto, veterinarian tech, culinary, and all of the other academies that we have dispersed all over our campuses. So the thing that I would like to leave with you tonight and maybe come back to us at, at a later date, is if, once this gets up and running, do you, do you ever foresee at one site for a career center? A career center that existed long before most of us were here? So I've even gotten emails recently, do I ever see a career center coming back to Union County Public Schools? And I know that a lot of students enjoy being in their home high school and, you know, being a pirate, being a panther, you know, whatever. So I think it, it's wonderful to have those academies at all of our different schools. But now that I've heard your presentation, now I am wondering, do we, do we need to start thinking about a career center once this is up and running so that they can collaborate? So that's the only feedback I would have.
Thank you, and we'll, we'll be glad to take that feedback. Obviously, that, there's a curriculum component to that, and then there's the facilities component to that. So from my perspective, my, if I had a vote tonight on, on the future of that, I would say yes. What that looks like, what, where that would be located, how we would pull something like that off, where kids have equal access to different programming, would be something that over the next years plus, we would need to work through, but we'll certainly take that back and come back to the, to the board.
Thank you. Thank you again.
I'd just like to add, along with the consideration, we are very hopeful that we will have a bond referendum this fall for a new Forest Hills High School, and then following a reinvigorated East Union, so there are exciting things happening in the Forest Hills Cluster in the future. And correct me if I'm wrong, it's, it's a school of choice, so if a student, although living in other parts of the county, is, does have enough interest in this course of study, they can, as long as they can get themselves there, they can enroll in this program at Forest Hills.
You are correct.
As it stands today.
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like to say, I think this is an awesome program, and you mentioned about the career center. There are a lot of people who have received many opportunities from the past because of the career center. And so, and with this program, this ag program, I think it's going to really help transform a lot of our students' lives. I have a, a special connection to each one of those schools. I went to Union Elementary and then East Union, Forest Hills, and I was privileged to work under Mr. Johnson as a TA. And when he got tired of me, he sent me to Dr. Crawford at East Union. And so I know, that's my story, and I'm sticking to it, Mr. Johnson. But I know this is really going to help transform a lot of our, the lives of our students. And one thing I would love to see, and I mentioned it at the curriculum meeting, is making sure that we bring in individuals who look like a lot of the students in that, in that cluster, to allow them to see that agriculture is not just one-sided. I think that's very important, because like she said, it's more than just hands in the dirt, that is very important as well. But I believe that when, when students who, who come from underserved families and challenges, to be able to see individuals who look like them from a different perspective, it would really blow and transform their minds to go into different careers and, and avenues that will really help transform the lives of not just them, but us in the future. So I'm excited, whatever we can do as a community to support the program, please, please feel free to let us know, because we want it to thrive, and I know that it's going to really, really blow the minds of this county and be a beacon of light for the state of North Carolina. So I'm excited about it.
Completely agree. Thank you. That brings us to teletherapy, support, Atrium Health, and I will ask Mr. McGraw to come forward.
Thank you, Ms. Merrill, members of the board, Dr. Houlihan. It's a little hard to follow a good program like that. I'm so thankful for farmers who provide food and products, man, and our county's so great at doing that. So tonight, I come to the board with a information on a proposed teletherapy program that will be provided by Atrium Health. First, teletherapy is an option when it comes to mental health services. Our first choice would always be in-person, but this is an option that, that allows us to provide for the mental health support of our students. UCS currently has 20 mental health therapists that serve our students across the district. Eleven of those mental health therapists serve our students from the collaborative agreement that we have with Union County. Nine of the therapists work directly for Union County schools. So why do we need this? Currently, each one of those therapists are seeing at least 25 students. And after one of those students rolls off, there's another student currently waiting to be seen by a mental health therapist. There is a need for these therapists. UCS student support staff did look for mental health therapists to do in-person service. We were unsuccessful in contracting for a person to do the in-person mental health therapy. That's why we went to the teletherapy. Due to the demands of the pandemic, it has been difficult to find student support staff overall, including the school-based therapists. Teletherapy was just another option and the reason we come here tonight for the, for approval from the Board of Education. One last thing, UCS must have parental permission before a school-based, based mental health therapist or therapist providing support through teletherapy could meet with a student and provide support. I will say that again, we have to have parental permission before we can provide teletherapy services to a student. That concludes my information on teletherapy. Board members, do you have questions?
Could you explain or elaborate further on how you acquire parental consent?
So our counselors would refer a student to the mental health therapist. The therapist would line up a meeting where they would do a type of intake with the parent and the student. At that time, we would get parental permission. And if the parent decides not to give us permission, we would not see the student. The mental health therapist would not.
What if the guidance counselor was unable to contact the parent or guardian to come, to come in person for this initial meeting?
If we cannot get parental permission in writing and meet with the parent, we would not be able to provide the service.
And that's the way it's been going all along, correct?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Heintal.
Not before the teletherapy program that you're talking about tonight? This is what we've been doing all the way along?
That is correct, Ms. Heintal.
And it will be the same with the teletherapy, right?
That is correct.
And the contract with Atrium requires us to get parental consent?
Yes, ma'am, it does. Our contract does require that.
Can you walk us through, for those of us that weren't, aren't on the finance committee, can you walk us through the six RFPs, requests for proposal? Can you walk us through the six bids that you received, and how was Atrium chosen over the other five?
So our Director of Student Support, Ms. Kasia Giddens, led the, led the review of the proposals. We did have six companies submit proposals. They went through a process of going through questions, rating each company, and after all the ratings come back of all six companies, the, the team of people that Ms. Giddens led, Atrium was the top choice to be, to receive the RFP.
Thank you. In this proposal tonight, if a parent comes in and meets with the guidance counselor, the parent or guardian and the student, and they ought to take advantage of this service, because it is my understanding for the past couple of years, it has been almost impossible to find a local therapist. And I believe it's, it's around 300 per hour, if, if you do find one and, and you're on a wait list. If, if this passes tonight, will there be any type of co-pay that a student or parent would have to cover to take advantage of this therapy?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
It was, it was in, not in this contract, there's no co-pay.
If a student is having their sessions with the teletherapy, can that therapist provide any referrals for other type of medical questions?
No, ma'am. There's, in our contract, there's no referrals allowed.
So the contract says no referrals can be given?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Could, could I drill down on that question? Tonight, we heard in public comments, concerns from some citizens about this program because of other services that Atrium provides in other divisions of their massive company. So what you're saying is, even though that's another Atrium company, our contract does not allow them to even refer internally to another division of Atrium that might involve some of those services that the parents, some of our speakers had concerns about tonight?
That, that's correct, Mr. Sides. Our contract is for mental health therapists. It does not provide for referrals to other Atrium companies at this time.
I have a question too. Is subcontracting allowed under the current contract?
You said subcontracting?
Subcontracting, yeah.
No, this, this service is provided by Atrium Health itself. Yes, sir, their, their mental health therapists.
Mr. McGraw, can you tell us approximately? I don't know if you know, you tend to have a lot of data off the top of your head, so we appreciate that. Do you happen to know how many students are currently on a wait list because we are short-staffed?
I, I do not know that number, Ms. Merrill.
Because I know that some of our cases have tripled from this time last year, so that might be good if you, if you do come across that number, if you want to send the board an email.
I will get that information for you and the board.
How were these five schools chosen? Because I know that there have been events at a couple of other schools that are not on this list, so I wanted to understand how these five schools were chosen over others.
So the five students who are on the initial...
The five schools.
The five schools. I'm sorry, I was writing down my note there to, to get that information to the board. The five schools were selected because they have shown the greatest need through our suicide intervention protocols, the greatest demand, and the greatest number of students who are... the greatest demand and the greatest number of students who are requesting the mental health services. So those five schools have shown the greatest, uh, demand and, and need for these services.
Where, um, can you explain, um, a little bit further for our sake and, um, viewer's sake, the funding mechanism, um, for this? Because I had one parent reach out to me and was, um, concerned that it was in our annual budget. Can you, um, clarify that?
No, thi- this would come from our ESRS II funding, which, uh, provides supplemental contracted health supports. It is, it is contracted, and Shauna can probably explain this better, but it is a contracted service that would expire at the end of the, the contract period. So the money would come from the ESRS II funding.
Okay. And I just want to make one final comment and, um, open it up to other questions. Um, after reviewing the contract this afternoon, um, I would like to have it on record that, um, it has, they have to have parent consent. The parent has to come in and meet with the guidance counselor and their student. Otherwise, it stops right there without parent consent. We cannot proceed further. I also want to, um, go on record that we do have a significant waitlist, although we don't have the number tonight. Um, the number of students needing, um, support has tripled from this time last year. And that was alarming when we learned that in closed session tonight. Um, and the contract does say that, um, we can cancel and get out of, out of this contract at any time. Would you like to elaborate on that?
No, that, that is correct. I think there is a...
Thirty days.
Thirty-day out for, if, if anything happens on either side.
Finally, I just want to say, uh, the parent of two student athletes in Union County, um, that were elite runners, cross-country and track. They constantly, my, my two boys constantly had shin problems, knee problems, hip problems. And our athletic trainers are also, um, contracted through Atrium. And just speaking for my two children, um, our athletic trainers have, have always done a great job with our student athletes. And, um, personally, um, if, if staff vetted the five other proposals, then I know that they have done a very, very good job, job with all of our student athletes. So board members, if you have any other questions or comments?
So to summarize, we have explored this option and come to this particular vendor due to a lack of capacity. We just don't have enough folks internally or through, uh, connection with the county to cover the demand for these services in this day and time. So we've explored this option as an additional resource.
That is correct, Mr. Sides.
And this, did this pass the Finance Committee unanimously? Okay. Thank you.
I mean, I spoke with a commissioner today. Um, there have been conversations, um, even coming out of, is it the JCPC?
Yes, ma'am.
The juvenile prevention...
Crime prevention.
Crime prevention. And I know that there is a group home, um, that supports many of our, um, students in Union County. And in speaking with the county, who has been unable to find therapists and hire therapists for in-person therapy, um, when I spoke to the county today, they said that it's so much better in the long run to help students now than to lock them up later because they never got help. And, um, and are you on the JCPC?
Yes, ma'am. I serve as the Union County Public Schools Representative.
So I know you know this area very well.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments or questions?
I had a question, um, Mr. McGraw. I know parents have to, um, we have to get the consent from the parent. What about a parent who's not able to come to the school? Are we able to do a home visit, uh, so that the, um, documents can be, be signed? So that a kid can receive the therapy that they need?
Reverend Kirkpatrick, if a student has a need and the parent can't get to the school, we'll find a way to get to their home and, or, or somewhere to get the signatures needed. But we're going to make sure we take care of our students first.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, this was a long weekend for me. Um, and by the way, I'm a longtime member of the JCPC, uh, as well. It was a long weekend because I, I really looked at, uh, this, uh, this issue from both sides. Um, there were a lot of, uh, emails, one of the parents made a comment about emails, but the emails did not come in singly. There were not just a single strand of emails with one voice. It was a plethora of voices and concerns on this email. First, I want to give you an opportunity to just, um, maybe combat or to address, a better word. I'm a Marine, so I got some military words inside of me. But address some of the things that you heard spoken in open session just to, uh, um, provide context to some of those things. And then, uh, while you are doing that, maybe I will, uh, legal, Ms., uh, Ms. Morris can just address that statute that was brought up, just so that we'll have context in that. And when you finish, I'll, I'll return.
Thank you, Reverend Benchin. There, there were several things I heard and I, I did address some of those in my, my information to the board. But I, I, I think the main thing I want people to understand, this is an option. Always, we feel the best option is in-person mental health support. However, we were unsuccessful in finding a person to contract with to do this in-person. That's why we looked at teletherapy and that's why we come to the board tonight. Um, second thing, we have 20 mental health therapists. They're maxed out at this point. We need to help our students and this is one way we help our students. Um, uh, the, the biggest thing I heard was about parental consent, about making sure that we talk to parents and get their consent. That's the only way we can provide this support to our students is if we get parental consent and a parent's signature to be able to provide this support. Um, there is a need. This helps our students. Um, the, the money issue, $180,000. Um, that, that is a three-month trial period, a 12-month contract. At the end of that time, the contract ends. It is ESRS II funding. It's coming from, that, that's funding source. So I think that's the main things I want to address, Reverend Benchin, at this point.
So guidance counselor has been...
Madam Chair, she was giving me to address my next point. Thank you, Madam Chair.
There was the question about the statute 90 dash 21.5 about a minor being able to give effective consent. The statute reads that a minor may give effective consent to a physician licensed to practice medicine in North Carolina. My understanding is that none of the people who would be providing the service would be physicians licensed to practice medicine in the state of North Carolina.
Thank you. And lastly, uh, before our, uh, chair comes, uh, back, this issue, uh, is near and dear to my heart. The year, uh, 2000 is a pinnacle year in my life. And I've told this before in other venues, but I say it tonight because I think for such a time as this, that it needs to be said. And that is, I myself was in need of mental health services. People thought because I was who I was, this big, strong, burly, Marine pastor, uh, community leader, that I should be able to have dealt with the concerns that had befallen me. But I was weighed down and I wouldn't wish that on anybody. And I know I had a lot of concerns over the weekend and even tonight. But until you're staring down the barrel of a mental health situation, when your life seemingly isn't your own and it seems as though that from your wife to your children, to colleagues, that no one is able to just pin down, I didn't have the, uh, the resources, not money, just nobody believed me because I was Jimmy Hayward Benchin, Sr. I'm the one they go to. But this is a real, powerful issue. And if we can do something, as long as the beginning and the ending is with the parents, I mean, support. But if this program finds itself going off into the weeds of some of the concerns these parents brought about, and I'll do everything in my power to bring it to a halt because I understand the mental health piece. The other things should be worked out with families. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Can I, is anybody else before? Okay, the contract is $180,000 for 15 months, correct? So it's $12,000 a month and we have to get, if we want out of it, if we find something that we don't like, it's 30 days to get out. So it's $12,000 a month.
Madam Chair, um, so, Mr. McGraw, all of the principals who are on this list, um, you all have, you all have had conversation with them and they believe that this program will be beneficial for their students, correct?
We've not had conversations with principals specifically about this program, but there is a need at these schools. I'm aware of that.
Right. I understand about the need. What I'm, my, what I'm trying to get to is, um, knowing that there is a need, I believe that with the proper support, that we're going to make sure that this program stays on track with what is it, what it is intended to do, uh, to make sure that our children are successful. As, uh, Madam Chair said about saving our kids at a young age, you and I, we sit on that board every week, every second Wednesday with JCPC. So we know the concerns and the issues that our kids are facing. And so, um, in therapy, one who has experienced it for himself, and I believe in it, um, therapy helped save my life, all right? And it has helped save a lot of people's lives. There were some conversations in therapy that may be uncomfortable for someone else, but at the end of the day, I believe that once, because everyone is staying true to the assignment of making sure that these students are healthy and successful, I'm pretty certain that they will receive what they need and everything will be taken care of properly as far as, um, what we all know what the contract says, um, that there's no referrals and things of that nature. And parents have a choice whether they will allow that, no one is making them, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. No one's telling them that your child needs to do it and they're putting them in a class or in a therapy session. It is the consent of the parent, going back to parent choice, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
It is parent consent, parent choice.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Comments? So one thing I did want to address is I think there's a little bit of confusion. And Dr. Houlihan, I, I invite you to jump in on this, but the term guidance counselor, um, having two UCS graduates, our guidance counselors are not social workers. They are not licensed psychologists. They are not licensed therapists. They, they have a huge, enormous responsibility that we can't add this on top of it. Our ga- guidance counselors are to help eighth graders register for high school and help them tran- transition to high school, to register and sign up for classes. Then they do the same for ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade and 12th grade, signing up for classes. Then they help with adding and dropping classes when students change their minds over the summers or whatever. Then they help with, um, ACT testing, SAT testing, EOGs, state EOCs, the entire senior classes, college, or not the entire, but college applications, letters of reference, um, constantly sending transcripts to colleges. What am I forgetting? And I, I see a high school prince, what, I mean, their job is huge. And that is the role of a guidance counselor.
You are correct. I think if we were to ask our high school counselors, um, if they could get to some level of counseling on a daily, regular basis, they would welcome that. But that is not the case across all 11 of our high schools. Because of all the other duties that Ms. Merrill just mentioned that require of them as also part of their job description, um, that's a lot of the work that they do. And if you will remember, that is part of the reason why several years ago, the board supported the, um, the addition of, uh, the, the additional, um, guidance counselors in our high schools to get, finally get to the point of a 250-student-to-one ratio in our largest comprehensive schools. That was around the same time that we entered into the collaborative with the county because we did not have the mental health side and the social work side physically employed and funded in UCS. So the demands of our counseling department, the demands of the mental health therapist, um, that, we do not have enough supply of individuals that, that have the capacity to do all of that work.
And the job descriptions are so unique and the licenses and certifications to counsel or provide therapy are so different that we wouldn't, wouldn't want a guidance counselor to go down the road necessarily of a therapist um, without those certifications. I will go on, um, I think it's very important to know that, so we're, I think, four or five years down the road where four years ago, we needed to hire more guidance counselors because we were way below the national and state average. So it's probably time to revisit that, just to, um, see where we have landed four years later. Do we, do we still need, um, more guidance counselors? Did we hit the mark that we set four years ago? Um, we also, um, have social workers. We have about 20 or so social workers in the dis- district. We have six psychologists, um, that is down from, I think, 22 positions that the remaining six, um, are, you know, primarily providing EC testing. And currently, um, we have 20 mental health therapists, but we're down four. Um, so, you know, I, I just want to thank you for thinking out of the box and thinking of a way to help the students that are on that waitlist.
Thank you, Ms. Merrill.
So I'll make a...
And once again, the trigger for this is, the trigger for this service for it to be used is what?
Parental consent.
Okay. Since this came out of finance, I make a motion to approve this and no second is needed. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? None. Motion passes. 9-0. Okay, that brings us to the budget for 2022, '23 budget proposal. Sean McLam.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm just coming to update you on any of the changes that we made from the Finance Committee in your board packet. There was an updated presentation with graphs and supplemental documents as well as the, um, document that we will submit to the county for the request. Couple of the items we updated from Finance Committee is we did make an adjustment to the board compensation implementation. Um, that is something that, like I, I mentioned in several of our meetings, that has been a discussion amongst, um, a lot of the districts across the state. So that implementation, we've amended to be a January 2020, 2023 implementation as well as an adjustment to the, um, security needed at board meetings. We did adjust those numbers. The only other item that we did...
So the numbers for security are, is because of addition, increase in off-duty pay?
Increase in off-duty pay and then, um, we do have a few additional at each meeting, but we feel we can balance out with that increase.
Thank you to all the officers that stay with us every night. We appreciate it very much.
Yes. Um, the other adjustment that we made is more... Um, the other adjustment that we made is more of, you know, the totals. We have the mandated lines that we had. There was, uh, an, or a request to, um, for the remaining funds for the implementation of our supplement increases from last year that we implemented in January. Um, you'll see that as totaled at the bottom and removed from the mandated total on the mandate line. So, um, that's not really a mandated increase. That's an increase or additional funding that will be needed to, um, from the county to provide that, that full year's, um, dollar amount. The, oh, the only one other little tweak was on the capital. Um, I, we did make a slight increase on the teacher and admin laptop, laptop lease amount just because there's some unknowns right now. Once we complete the RFP process and go through the, um, entire lease agreement, if there's any other tweaks that we need to make at that point, we will.
That increase?
It was five percent. It wasn't, yeah, it wasn't much. I'm hoping that we stay close to that. So, but other than that, that's all I have. I don't know if you have any questions or anything additional that you have thought of or need or?
So, on the security.
Yes.
That is because those employees got a raise and were, you know, for their job that they do.
Correct.
And so this is the extra that we have to have to make sure we're covering their new pay rate?
Correct.
Okay. And then for the increase for the board member monthly stipend, why did you think that was a good idea to have in the budget?
Like I said, that was an item that many of our other districts, um, I'm in a group, the Big Twelve Finance Officers, and we've had a lot of discussion. We've had, um, some back and forth and gathered information amongst us. And it's just been a topic of conversation, um, in many of those districts and felt that it was an item that we, we needed to address. The last time we addressed it, it went way, I mean, we, we had not, um, had any consideration for those stipend amounts in a very long time. So it's just something that we just need to be mindful of and not let get out of line like we did the last time.
Because if it gets out of line, then?
It costs more for us to re-align those numbers.
So to do it gradual is better than all of a sudden be?
And, and that's really our intent with a lot of our market adjustments and other increases that we put in, um, to our budget annually.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We, um, have two items that were added this afternoon. The first one, A, is, um, the Board of Education Budget Proposal. Um, and that will be an action item for this board to adopt the budget in order for staff to send it over to the county, uh, for their consideration. So if anyone, um, would like to have more conversation or comments or offer a motion?
I, I have a, a comment, observation, whatever. I'm concerned about the budget item of two point one million for thirty additional teaching positions for reduction of classroom size. I, I support the intention, but I think in the challenges of today, we have some other things in play as well as just replacing the positions that we have now, the vacancies. So I think that's going to be, and Dr. Harris will probably agree, that, that's going to be quite a challenge to add those positions on top of it. And again, I understand why it is, um, being requested. And I, uh, I, I support it in kind, but I think in reality that it's going to be very difficult to fill those positions in addition to the other, position, vacancies we already have from existing positions as well as the literacy specialists we're looking to add. So I would like to submit for the board and welcome other comments that that two point one million, uh, budget item be removed from the operating.
So are you going to make a motion to adopt the budget without the two point one million? And I guess I would like to hear, hear what Dr. Houlihan?
Yeah, I would, I wanted to start that discussion.
So that was a motion. Do I hear a second? Hearing this, uh, second, that motion fails. I, I think that we need to give the county what our needs are for the, would that, what, so Dr. Houlihan, can you talk about what thirty?
As I've said in the past, this budget proposal that was submitted to the boards a couple of months ago does present the true needs of the district. And I agree with Ms. Heintal. Part of our statutory obligation is to present to the county what our true needs are. When it comes to these positions, I agree with Mr. Sides that, um, given the national narrative on teacher vacancies and the, the lack of a pipeline, um, it will be difficult to fill. However, we do have some strategies in place, like our T, Teacher Assistant to Teacher Program, that unless I'm wrong, Dr. Harris, is around twenty to twenty-five individuals. If this is approved, I'd like to go ahead and earmark these funds for categories of employees like that that we know we will, we will need to place. Um, so will it be a challenge? Absolutely. But I'd rather have the money, uh, set aside as opposed to having to come back uh, in two or three months with this as a need and a budget shortfall.
And I understand, understand what Mr. Sides is saying. Because we also have in the budget for thirty, um, reading interventionists as well. And those are certified teachers as well. So I understand, uh, Mr. Sides, what you're talking about because that's an additional sixty, um, positions. Okay, so we have a budget that needs approval by this board to send to the county. I move, do you want to go? Go ahead.
Well, I had a question, uh, as far as the, um, should we address before approving the budget, the early funded items?
So can we just do that together? The CIP and the budget, because both go over. So the CIP is in the packet, is in our board docs as well. And there's a, um, a, Mr. Sides, at the last meeting, asked for, um, projects that we would like to get, um, finished over the summer. So, um, Mr. Moore and Mr. Burnett put together a list of that, and that's on board docs. So we would like to ask, it's like three point three million dollars. We'd like to ask the county to get that money now, to give us the money before the budget is, it's, it's not on additional to the budget, it's in the budget, but to get it early so that we can get it done over the summer. Is that what you, so?
It, it, for those that are not well-versed in how the financial pieces work here, in the past, the, the county is our funding source for operating in capital. And in the past, the county worked on a tax rate system. We were assigned a cent rate of the county budget. And if the economy and what other factors projections exceeded what was projected in the county budget, then we would share in that bounty of additional revenue. In this current twenty-one to twenty-two fiscal year, the county has gone to a, I call it a fixed budget. In other words, you're going to get X number of dollars and that's it. If county revenues exceed, well, it goes into the county fund balance. So in light of that change, I feel like our only avenue is to ask for the county to do, and, correct me, my termina, terminology is not correct, but a budget amendment to their current fiscal year budget. So with the fiscal, the new fiscal year starting July one, these items that we have identified would be paid for out of their fund balance of the current fiscal year because of the timing needs of these projects. With the fiscal year of July one, if we don't know what our, and our new budget doesn't kick in until July one, these projects that can't be done basically with kids in the building, then we're looking to actually complete these projects over the summer of twenty twenty-three, even though they were approved in a budget that is effective July one of twenty twenty-two. So if the county would agree to accelerate the funding of these projects, then the Facilities Department can start the process in a timely fashion that would allow them to complete these projects over this summer while kids are not in the building. And we've identified highest priority projects that need to be done in a, in a timely basis. Is that fair to, fair to say? Does the Facilities Committee, uh, concur with that observation?
Yes, because the Facilities Department would need time now to start, um, receiving bids and bringing it to committee and accepting bids so that the work could begin as soon as the kids get out of the classroom in June. And that takes a lot of, um, forethought and time beforehand. We, we cannot wait until July first to, to know whether we have that money or not to start that process. So that, we need to be able to start the process now, knowing that the county, um, can put that money forth sooner. And it's things like chillers and painting and things like that, that you don't want the kids into the building when we're doing it. And those projects have been listed and, um, put onto board docs.
These are not new projects.
No.
These are projects that are in the CIP and have been. But we are looking to accelerate so that they can be done in a timeframe that's necessary, i.e. the kids aren't in the building, right?
Correct.
Correct.
Now, let me ask about the mechanics and maybe Michelle or whoever can help me with this. If we are going to make this ask of some three point three million in this current fiscal year, do we deduct that amount from our formal budget request for fiscal twenty twenty-two to twenty-three? How, how do we, how do we do that? Because?
They've done this for, well, they've done it with, with fund balance before, correct?
But if they deny this, then it's not in our budget. So how, how do we?
How do we do that?
Reconcile the, the two?
We just want, we want them to give us the money in advance.
Yeah.
And then take it out of our CIP once it, yeah.
Yeah.
And we've done this in the past when we did have true-up funds. We would submit our full budget with our full CIP and then they may come back to us and ask us for the list of projects that would then be deducted from what was requested. I think it'll take a conversation with the county for them to let us know how they would prefer us to submit this. We can submit our full CIP with the full dollar amount and then we can submit this as a list of projects that could be done over the summer that are also included in the CIP that could come off of that if they could fund it.
Correct.
At this point.
Because our funding, our funding request for these projects identified are frankly as quickly as the county is willing to put it on their agenda and approve it, correct? If they do it this month, that's none too soon for facilities to start. So that technically pulls it off our budget request for, for next year. I just don't want to request this. It gets turned down and it's not in our budget because we asked for it early and, you know, the projects get lost.
Exactly, that's why, that's why I would say we keep our CIP the way it is.
Alright.
Make this, the items that we've identified that could be done early and that we would like to do over the summer and make it a supplemental document for their consideration.
Okay.
What we already have on board docs.
Okay.
Okay. So I would make a motion to send our budget to the county, including the CIP, and ask for the accelerated money for the projects that are on board docs. And that the board, um, officially adopts this budget.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay?
And I don't know how, I, I don't know how staff is going to communicate this to the county. I assume it will be a, a staff to staff conversation. But I think, uh, our ask for the early funding of the projects is as early as they're willing to do it. I mean, if they're going to sit around and, and not address it until, you know, mid-June, we're not exactly gaining a whole lot of time. So does, I, I assume you'll start the conversations and the whole reasoning of doing this is to be addressed as soon as possible.
Yes, we will be submitting this document and all of the, um, approved requests to the county by Friday. That's on our timeline. And then once we've done that, we will schedule some time to discuss it with staff.
That would be great.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That brings us to policies and administrative guidelines for review.
Uh, good evening. You have, uh, four policies for review and then two administrative guidelines that come to you, um, for this, uh, one review. And if anyone has any questions, I'm glad to answer those. Okay, thank you.
The, uh, there was one, uh, policy that was brought up, uh, tonight before.
Yes, that's Policy four nineteen, domicile and residence requirements.
That'll go back to policy one more time.
Yeah, those four will go back to policy one more time before they're approved, um, probably at the July meeting.
Okay, thank you.
As written, will it solve that four fellows' problem?
We're not going to have a, um, a May Policy Committee meeting. So it'll be June for the Policy Committee and then July for the board.
Ms. Morris, quick question on that four dash nineteen. How does it come, like, how are sports considered? If they, so if the residents cross this county line, their address is in Mecklenburg, they pay for union, can they participate in sports?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's my understanding. Mr. Moore, am I, yes, Mr. Moore is agreeing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board comments? Happy Staff Appreciation Week for everybody. Hope you guys are getting loved on and thank you for everyone in our staff. And say a prayers for the families of the two teachers that, um, have died for, at Sun Valley and, um, Middle School and Parkwood High School. I know those, um, schools are going through a hard time.
Madam Chair, um, I would like to give a great big shout out to, uh, Wolf School. I was privileged to attend their prom last week. And when I tell you, it was one of the most fascinating events that I have ever attended. The energy, the excitement, uh, the moves, uh, those kids can really dance. And they show you how to enjoy life. And so the faculty and staff there, all teachers in Union County Public Schools, uh, we give you, uh, we celebrate you for Teacher Appreciation Week. But I really want to say, last week, it gave me an opportunity to really evaluate why I am here and allow myself to know that, uh, someone may have challenges, but they still find a way to make life fulfilling, you know? And so, uh, again, to all of the staff at Wolf, keep up the good work, uh, the principals, um, everyone there. Uh, just keep doing what you're doing because they are really making a difference in the lives of those kids. So I just wanted to say that.
I just want to give a, uh, I use a, a good friend's words, a shout out uh, to, uh, to the citizens of this county uh, that have come before this board over the last year. One of the comments was made about last May and it does seem so long ago and the battles that we fought since last May. And, uh, to this board for, um, being such a steadfast group of, um, of citizens themselves that have taken on enormous tasks at, at great personal peril to themselves. So I just want to thank the citizens of Union County and this board for showing the world how democracy works.
I would just like to comment on, uh, teacher and staff appreciation. Um, on this side of COVID and on this side of having two UCPS graduates from this amazing school district. Our teachers, our staff, I truly believe are the best that can be hired. And I just want to say, thank you. Thank you for your sacrifices, for what you do day in and day out, before you come to work, after two o'clock, after three o'clock. All, all of our coaches and teachers and everyone that just pour themselves into our students. That is, that is why this is such a great district to wo, work for and raise a family. So thank you to all of our teachers and staff. So thank you to all of our teachers and staff. Any other comments?
Yes, ma'am. I would like to also express my gratitude and Teacher Appreciation Week. And I had the honor today of assisting with duty-free lunch for the fine staff at East Union Elementary, and I had the opportunity to do that for two DLI classes, Ms. Rodriguez's third grade class and Mr. Flores' fourth grade class. So I got two free Spanish lessons today. And we, I was fascinated sitting in the class to see the level of fluency. And one of the things that really struck me is, you know, I go in reading the classes or something like that, I'll ask them what they, what they want to do when they grow up. And, you know, third graders, fourth graders, you're going to, I want to be a YouTuber, I want to do this, I'm going to do that. But when I went into this class and talked to these young people about what they wanted to do, I got doctors, veterinarians, even some lawyers, Olympic athletes, a couple of teachers, a soccer coach, gymnastics competing in the Olympics. It was exhilarating to see the high expectations and hopes that these students have. And I think the DLI program, the dual-language immersion that we offer at Union County Public Schools is, is just fantastic. So it was a very uplifting experience today. And on Friday, if your principal hadn't told you about it already, we have a special surprise at lunchtime for the fine staff at Rocky River Elementary. So stay tuned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sides. That brings us to announcements. The Finance Committee will meet on May 24 at 8:00 a.m. via Zoom, and Facilities will be on May 25, 9:00 a.m. PDC.
The Strategic Planning, Technology, and Transportation Committee is scheduled to meet May 25 at 7:30 here at the PDC if needed.
And curriculum will follow that meeting at 9:00 in this very room, the 25th.
Policy will not meet in May or next meeting.
Facilities is meeting on the 25th at 9:00. Well. Do you want to go 10?
To be determined. Let me work it out.
Okay.
Policy will not have a meeting in May or next meeting. For Policy is June 21st.
Okay, thank you very much. I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.